Good afternoon and welcome to the Regional Governing Board of the Southwest Vermont Regional Technical School District. Today is Monday, March tenth, twenty twenty-five. Um, we will call this meeting to.
The certain.
We five more minutes to deal with some technical difficulties. Yes, Tassie. Okay, um, we've called the meeting to order. Um, we will now ask for any public comments. There's nobody in the, on the Zoom call in the public. You done? Um, the.
Nice. I think the computer speakers is what, maybe just turn ones down. We're just hearing them through the computer. Oh, I think, I don't, yeah. Me the mic. The volume, yeah, down. And then turn that back too. That should be right.
Yeah, okay, so the first order of this is will be, um, for the current board members to, um, sign the Vermont School Board Code of Ethics. Um, basically, there's a statement on here stating that I agreed to sign the make it the school board code. You know, like, this director member of the leadership team. You can get to have these time, uh, the, um, the healthier agreement. As board members are signing off, um, we'll move into the board reorganization for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school year. Um, so the first motion will be to your motion for the, um, board chair.
I'd like to nominate Mike Cutler for chair.
Second.
Okay, I have a first and a second.
I'm third.
Third and fourth. Any others?
Move vote nominations.
Move to close nominations?
Second, go.
Okay. So now you vote, um, okay.
We vote.
For those that are, um, in support of Mike Cutler, to be moved forward to the board for chairperson.
I, times.
Aye. Interesting.
Fine.
Want to. Uh, thank you.
Now I get to.
Yes, uh, I, I appreciate that. Thank you very much. Uh, I guess the next item on the agenda is to hear nominations for a vice chair. Any nominations?
I'll nominate Ken Swerit.
Oh, pretend, uh, second?
I'll second.
John seconds, any other nominations?
Well, great nominations, second.
Okay, all those in favor of Ken Swerit as vice chair signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, thing. Okay, uh, then we need, uh, nominations for a clerk. I, uh, I think that our Don Rosowski, uh, being our nominee is a clerk. Have a second for that?
Second.
All those, uh, sorry, any other nominations?
I move nomination to be closed.
Second. Okay, uh, all those in favor of John's clerk?
Aye, I'm staying. I'm gonna like to, no, I'm sorry.
Oh, good luck here on, sorry, friend.
Uh, all right, I guess the next thing is to approve our meeting place, which is the Assembly Room here or online. Do I hear a motion? Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, the next one, approve the time. Uh, so historically, we've met off and on ten a.m. and four p.m. Uh, I believe with the ten a.m., hopes to see classes in action. Um, so I will just entertain, uh, any ideas for keeping that or changing that.
I would like to entertain that we change that either to an instant four p.m. or an instant six p.m. time. Um, my reasoning, um, for one, I'm not aware of any other regular school board or select board meetings that occur anytime other than six p.m. Um, I also find that more teachers, parents, and students have the opportunity to engage their board if they were held at a later time. Granted, it doesn't happen often, although if it was made consistently more accessible to majority of the public.
Can you hear me?
Feel like perhaps we could entice some people to get involved with the board, even if sit and then listen and learn about what we do at the board level, and then maybe.
Can you hear me?
Concerns that could bring it forward.
Yes, man, we can hear you.
No. So, um, my, uh, I don't know if it would be a motion would be either four p.m. or six p.m. consistently. I think having one meeting be at one time and then the next meeting be at another time, that's confusing to the people and it makes no sense to me.
Any other thoughts or ideas?
I like, to be honest, I like the idea of being able to visit the classes. It's, it's not like, like you mentioned, a regular school board, because, you know, that's just a regular class. This is a hands-on experience welding. We want to see what's going on, culinary, want to see, um, petition, all of these things. It's really nice to see what's going on. And I think we have ten meetings a year, basically, nothing in February, nothing in July. And I think if we rotated, as we've done this past year, one at ten and one at four, um, I think that works without a problem. And I'll be honest with you, I'm on the, uh, the Planning Commission here in Bennington, and we move from three thirty to five at Town Hall to six o'clock at the firehouse twice a month. And since I, since we've done that about a year and a half, two years, we haven't had one person come to, uh, any of our meetings. So, you know, it's the same, if, if someone has a problem, they can first of all see the superintendent if there is a problem, but then there's within a month, there would be a meeting at six, uh, four o'clock where they could make the meeting. So, you know, I, I think the flexibility of, uh, ten and a four makes sense to me.
I would like to simply say, if, if we're meeting consistently at four p.m., six p.m. time, we could perhaps hold quarterly special meetings wherein the point of those meetings would be to visit the classes. In fact, we could have a schedule wherein we, you know, check out a quarter of all the classes that we have, one meeting, the next meeting, we visit, you know, another group of the classes until throughout the entire year, we visited all the classes. I think that would make for an excellent special board meeting. Um, and I, I think that would be the right way to do it, in my opinion, again.
I've, uh, heard six o'clock run out there. I'll just point out that that conflicts with a select board meeting. And so these members will only be able to over the half of a select board meetings. I'm not sure if that's a consideration.
Good, what? I, I agree with having a consistent meeting time. Uh, I've been really enjoying, um, seeing the students in action at our ten o'clock meetings when we do chores, which is not that often. Uh, I really have enjoyed it. Um, I, I don't think it's a terrible idea to have special meetings. I, I joined the, um, counselor from the schools that contribute to Southwest Tech. And I got to stay for most of it. It was really fun to see students working and doing stuff and meeting with, um, teachers. I really would like personally, professionally, uh, to have a consistent meeting time. That would be my input.
What else?
I think that's.
Fun time.
Four p.m., since you don't want it to conflict with, uh, select board meetings, as Tim just mentioned. I appreciate that, and, uh, you know, four is a, is a fine time to meet. Um, that way, you know, those who are on the clock here might have a concern for us, who are just to the board, um, can do so, um, without having to take time off of, well, be frank, working here.
Any input from staff here at four o'clock is obviously better than six?
Four o'clock works, six o'clock works for me. Um, so just so I understand, so is your proposal, Asher, to have a consistent four o'clock board meeting time?
Yes.
And then throughout the year, schedule special additional meetings or opportunities for board members to come in during the school day while the building is alive?
Yes, specifically, so that way, throughout the course of the calendar year, we will have the opportunity, provided we go to each of these four meetings, to see every class, because I've been here for, you know, four years now, and I have seen maybe half of the classes in action, if that. I would like to see all of them, or at least have the opportunity to see all of them. That would be an excellent use of the board's time, and I think that would be a good way to really connect with the students and, you know, prepare them, say, hey, this is gonna be board day. You get to meet your board members. If you have questions about Southwest Tech, things you want to see changed about, we can actually prepare them for this and really drive home the point that the board is making specific time for them, not just to talk about board issues, but specific time for them to see them and to see what they do. I think that is, uh, going to be a, a successful recipe for what we want to do, which is to engage with, um, all the wonderful things that Southwest Tech does, as Ken pointed out. I completely agree with that. Uh, I, I just don't think that it should be a part of our regular meetings.
Do I have, uh, any motion on the table to name the time of our meetings?
I, I'm just gonna say, I, I do enjoy the current rotation. There's no real best convenient time for me either. It can be rolled in time, however they occur, be a part of this, and then do we can do. Um, adding additional meetings is just adding more time. We are required to, um, responsibilities, so, you know, um.
Keep a scratching in the seat.
Yeah, consideration as well. It's not just us. It's, you know, we're gonna air this as well, so. The, the, all, all the time work good for me, uh, but it does work for everybody, and that's, and that's why we have a board meeting.
I would like to move that our consistent, regular board meeting time is four p.m. Um, with the caveat that we would like to have some kind of special board meeting, uh, four times per calendar year, so that way we see all of the classes and they can prepare to meet us.
So your proposal, additional four possible meetings in addition to what we're doing?
Special board meetings that would not count as regular board meetings, so there would be a optional line that's supposed to affect for board members who can and want to stay.
So as, uh, you're just going to.
Sorry, I'm second for discussion.
I'll start you.
Uh, just, uh, going back to the new, um, by my own put in about meeting type, meetings and attending meetings, you're saying, like, that, that, that his plan, uh, like, not help for that, so maybe that person could miss all those. If, so, that's what my, yeah, that's what I.
So it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be a warrant meeting. It would be a board opportunity to come in and see the, the programs in action.
And additionally, if the board sees fit, it can be advertised to the community and to the students. That way they, I don't think it's.
No.
Possible, as far as background traps go and things like that. So I just, I mean, we go superintendent to clarify that, but I don't think that's how it works, okay?
Okay, the motion on the table to make our meeting time is four p.m. with optional four extra meetings during the day to see the school active. Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
I guess aye.
Leonton, aye, okay, so that was, uh.
So hold your hands up.
Yep, sorry, two, five, six. Aye. All the nays?
I'm waiting to ask you a question.
Okay.
Uh, yes, so, whatever.
Yeah. Uh, did, did you go back?
I'm down going forward.
Oh, no, I, I didn't hear you say your hands, sorry, okay. So I believe the four p.m. does pass there.
Just want to say, Mike, I've said this before, in the, we're trying to get the, the public to come here. They're not gonna come. They're busy, they got other things to do. It's why we all get elected to, to talk to them. The only time I've, I've been on board for over thirty-five years, and I can tell you, the only time they come is patient negotiations, and I went to the Mount Anthony one about the pledge, so trust me. They'll come out, oh, there's a item like that, but they're not gonna come. They've counted us to do the right things. So anyway, that's all I got to say.
Thank you. Uh, but yeah, I do believe that passes our official meeting time, four p.m. Uh, with more optional meetings that I guess we can discuss and schedule when needed. Uh, below on this page in the packet is obviously our meeting dates, um, that don't all be, oh, sorry, buddy.
Need correction.
Oh, corrections, okay.
Couple of corrections on the list. Um, so the Monday, September eighth, or on your sheet, it was September third. It should say September eighth. Um, and then the only other correction, it says Monday, October twelfth. It's a holiday, but that should state October thirteenth is a holiday, um, but the October twentieth is accurate.
Uh, then it's all good.
Yep, okay.
Uh, last two things to approve before we can, I think, go to the executive session is to approve our paper of record, which has been in the past Bank and Banner, Manchester Journal, all that, so, um.
I'm a little bit.
Okay. Aye. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
It's, it's hard for me to hear the question. It's, uh, it's a lot of, I mean, I hear, but I, it's not making out what it is that we're trying to achieve. So I can't, I can't vote on it because I can't really understand what it is. It's echoing in the room.
Oh, okay. Uh, we're, we're voting, we're voting on the paper of record.
I, I still don't get it. I see your mouth working and I hear some stuff, but it's not clear. I hate, I had, I couldn't make it because of babysitting. Uh, so, uh, if there's anything, uh, that you think I would be opposed to, let me know, that's all. By saying, Leon, I won't vote for that.
Can you hear us better now, Leon?
I went to town, well, I, the thing, I've already passed the oath and taken it and signed in and everything along that line, so.
Is someone else's speaker on the screen?
Maybe I have, should call the phone number because I can't get it. I should try the phone.
The speaker should be the dial, the thing.
It's supposed to be a little change, right?
It was just, uh, it's changing.
Oh. Is that better, Leon?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna try calling on a phone. Um, and use the iPad, my, I tried logging in on my iPad and it still said it's waiting, and I'm waiting in the waiting room.
Well, the phone work goes without, is a, is a science battle, bro.
Sure, it's about meeting, huh?
Yes.
Meeting ID, followed by town. You have not entered any conference.
Can you hear us now?
I'm trying to do it by phone.
Leo, can you hear me? Here. Okay, so.
Well, just the end of this is, I have now two. Leon, can you hear us now?
I can hear you now. I'm, I'm gonna see, can I hear on this, uh, iPad? I got, I logged in on the iPad. Let us see here. Got it.
Well, you can hear us through the iPad.
Hopefully it works at the public level, but.
Okay, you can talk now, let's see.
Hello, Leon?
Oh, that's better on the iPad.
There we go.
Good.
All right.
Let's start at the beginning. Um, uh, so, uh, I'll wait for Tim to get up. He's trying to connect him.
There we go.
We'll have two Leons.
We've got two Leons.
She's got the twins.
Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go on the iPad.
Everyone's Leo. All right. Okay, I, I, I'll keep moving along. So, um, let's, uh, I'll redo this. We're approving the paper of record, which has historically been the Bank and Banner, Manchester Journal. Uh, I'm looking for a motion for that effect.
Boom.
A second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, all those opposed, abstain, okay. And the last one is just an approval warrants off, warrants ciders, the chair, the vice chair, and the clerk.
Over.
Okay, thank you, Brandon. Second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, abstain, okay, so carry. I believe next is you want to do the executive session. Uh, so, uh, look for a motion to go an executive session for confidential attorney-client communications under one BSA, section three thirteen one.
So I can.
Have you, and Leon seconded.
Okay.
Request the, um, Rebecca Tattersall to join us if needed.
Okay, if needed, Rebecca will join us. Uh, can I move here? Oops, oh, sorry.
Leon seconded.
Thank you, all right. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thing, okay, we're in the executive session.
Well, I'll be, let me put Cat TV in the waiting room.
Nothing by yourself.
Recording in progress.
Okay, so that motion to go to executive session?
Go.
Second? Thank you. All those in favor, aye?
All right.
Okay, consent agenda, uh, minute from the RGV front board meeting of Monday, January thirteenth.
Boom. Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Staying, thing, any nays? Thank you. So, minute from the twenty twenty-five annual board meeting, Monday, March third, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Reposed, any extensions? One extension in front of the time. Uh, payroll warrants, uh, thousand twenty-six, thousand twenty-eight, thousand thirty, thousand thirty-one, and twenty-one.
Go.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
And any extensions? None? Uh, vendor warrants, thousand twenty-seven, thousand twenty-nine, and thousand thirty-two.
Go.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Uh, cash flow, revenue, expenses, and the treasurer's report are in your packet or the drop box. Uh, committee reports, educational district listings, it's like, uh, do we have any report there?
Yeah.
Uh, so we met, uh, January thirty, yeah, and what were, like, two topics. One was, um, the boom left for building trades, uh, so Mr. Cool came in, kind of talked to us about the size needs and what he was planning on using it for, and it appears to me, like, you know, it makes sense to get the size left that he requested, and as far, uh, transporting the lift, he was talking about working with, um, one of the certifications for CDLs. Uh, the trader there have access to the equipment move that. Um, so that's that. And then we also talked about, uh, the welding department, refrapping hitting adjacent room, uh, to add four additional, both four welding stations, and then turn it smaller, we add two welding stations. Um, maybe one of those options, and this, uh, of what that may look like as far as equipped those, and how will they benefit the adult education program as well. And I'll let, you know, Rob, we will elaborate on that in the storage.
Thank you, Jake. Uh, any questions on this round? Any other? Okay, um, moving along, we do have an adult update for Rob.
Yes, uh, well, good afternoon, everyone. Uh, my name is Rob Bahin. Uh, for those of you who are new, I oversee our workforce and adult technical education programs here. Um, I was a board member here at one point in time, um, as well, so, uh, I've been here for about six years now. And, um, what I like to do periodically is come in and give the board an update on what our workforce and adult technical education programs are up to. Um, so, everybody have this? This gets passed around, okay? Um, so I'm just gonna run through this really quickly, and then I'll answer any questions that you folks have. Um. So we're gonna, we're gonna basically start in November here, uh, with, uh, tractor operation. That did turn out to be a winter class because we had nice weather, uh, three Saturdays in a row in October, November, which worked out really well for a tractor class. Um, we did have three students enroll in that. Um, I've listed the different skills here, uh, that they learned. Now, we're gonna run that class again in May. We have capacity for four students in that class, but we keep it small so that everybody gets enough seat time, uh, with the tractors, so. Um, we would have had four students, but, uh, we found that one student's wife had signed him up and never bothered to tell him. Um, so we think of the class the first day, um, and have a big. Um, so we think of the class the first day, um, and have a big guy I knew from CDL, and I called him, and he didn't have any idea what I was talking about, so, the mystery was solved, that's, uh, apparently some lack of thorough communication, um, uh, had one less person in that class, but again, we'll have four, um, and I anticipate that being full, uh, LNA, uh, being our most, our most popular program. Uh, we just wrapped up, uh, our winter LNA class, we had eight students enroll in it, uh, seven finished, all seven of those passed their state licensure exam.
Yeah.
Um, we have more LNA classes coming up, and they are full with wait lists, so, um, it is a very popular program. Uh, introduction to welding, uh, has been very successful, uh, we just finished, uh, our winter class, four students all complete with the program, and then tomorrow, we will have another class, uh, with four students, and, uh, that program is ready to roll. Um, in May, we're going to be offering a, uh, women's specific welding class, same deal, introduction to welding. Um, many tech centers across the state do adult technical education, uh, are going to be offering women's welding, it'll all look a little different at each, uh, center, um. Via Tim Mullin, it was my idea, uh, so, and, uh, a lot of tech centers have launched onto this, so, uh, it's a really great opportunity, uh, to get more women, uh, into some of these trades, and we're coordinating with Vermont Works for Women on this one, so.
Ian, Ian, what if I, if I ask, like, I love the idea, like. What's the difference?
Um, so.
They're very capable, that's.
Yeah, I like, I, it's.
Yeah.
Yep, so, one of the observations that we've heard from, uh, some of our welding teachers, including, uh, Tim Mullin, who teaches for us, is that, uh, in mixed classes, uh, women tend to hang back a little bit more, uh, and tend to, tend to, uh, not be as assertive as they could be, um, and so, uh, Tim had an idea of being a classical typically for women, uh, and so we're gonna give that a shot, and, uh, see how it goes, so, but, uh, yeah, it's been a very popular idea, tech centers do give this a shot, so, predominantly in May, um, we're doing this, but other tech centers have different standards as well, so, yeah. Uh, bookkeeping is a new offering online, uh, we do have three people enrolled in that, which is great, um, that is a high needs job in Vermont, so we're looking to respond to that demand, um, and massage therapy is ongoing, um, all three students that we enrolled are still in the program and doing quite well, and, uh, we will be wrapping that class up at the end of the school year, and we'll, uh, we'll be seeing more recruiting for the next class, which starts in August, probably be seeing some advertisement, we have an ad at the movie theater right now, you'll be seeing things in the banner, and on Facebook, and other such places, so. Uh, upcoming classes, uh, we will have, uh, a spring and summer LNA class, like I said, both are full with wait lists already, um, and we will be running another CDL class, which starts next week, um, and that is booked up as well, um. We are looking into how we can sort of eliminate some of this backlog of students, because when we have wait lists, we tend to lose people, um, and they have to wait months and months to be able to get into a class, and they find other things to do, or life happens, and they can no longer enroll, uh, so we're looking for ways to, uh, clean up those backlogs, uh, and one of those is we're gonna run a summer CDL class this year to get a few more students through CDL, so, and then, uh, as you know, part of my job is to work with industry, uh, and develop classes specifically for the, uh, those particular industries, um, and we've been doing that here this year with Command, um, they're just down the street, which makes it very convenient, um, we ran a blueprint reading class for them in the fall, um, we're gonna develop, essentially, a blueprint reading two point O class, uh, for their employees as well, so, and that is upcoming, it's up till spring. Uh, on the back, just giving you a little update of what I've been up to, uh, and, uh, some pictures of our recent classes. Um, that's one of our massage therapy students giving a, uh, free chair massage at Winter Fest in North Bennington, uh, something they offer, and we were trying to do community events, uh, with that program to get them out there so that people could learn about the program, uh, those are our most recent LNA graduates, and there's Cindy Mars all the way on the right, uh, our teacher, in case you don't know her, and this is the welding celebrity of the year, uh, that is in fact Tim Payne, as it essence in Tim Payne from next door at high school, uh, he took, uh, introduction to welding, uh, and, uh, very much enjoyed it, and had, uh, really good reviews of the class, so. Yeah, so that's, uh, that's the update, uh, uh, TJ did mention the welding space, um, we are just about wrapped up, um, and upgrading the current, uh, welding room, uh, we now have three stations in there, uh, the last piece of it is, uh, some new ventilation hosing, hosing, um, that's not the right way to phrase that, uh, new ventilation hose and hood, uh, for fuel extraction, uh, that'll be going in there shortly, that, uh, that part is on order, we should have it soon in April, we install that, so, um, and, uh, Justin and Art, uh, from the manufacturing program are diligently working on cleaning out the adjacent room, uh, so that we can take a look at that for, uh, our new welding space down there as well, so. There was a lot of stuff stored in that room over twenty-five years, and, uh, they've been working very hard to get it cleaned out, so that we can use that mess.
Any questions for Rob?
I just wanna say. Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
But I'm gonna take one of them, that's.
Right, sounds good, let me know.
Yeah, excellent update. Thank you, Rob.
Yep, you got it.
Uh, next is an auditor's report update from the back.
So, in the drop box and possibly in your packet, will be copies of two letters from RHR Smith. They have, they are the auditing firm that we use located in Maine, um, every year, they have to do the previous year's financial audit, and if anybody wants to, like, read it, there's a copy of the audit report over there on that table, feel free on the way out the door to pick one up, and you can read all about the Southwest Tech financials, and all the pages in between, and if you have trouble sleeping, you might wanna pick one of those up, and it might help you, um, but these two letters, I'm not gonna read them, uh, they were in there for you to reference, but basically FY twenty-four's audit was done, it's completed, and there were no problems, no major findings or concern, um, our financials are in good shape, we follow all the Gatsby requirements that we're supposed to, that got the, basically the accounting standards, and, um, they didn't find any issues with any of our procedures as far as our checks and balances, so, we're in good shape.
Thank you, um, my life is great, and I love, so, appreciate all of them.
Goodness, goodness. Okay, moving along, uh, we have some action items, uh, we have a nomination for the, uh, A advisor.
Yes, um, so, um, one of our CTSOs, which is our student organization, um, for our students here, uh, we have not had in a number of years, probably going back to when Dave Dents was here, right? Even, even prior to Dave Dents, so, it's been a number of years since we offered, um, Future Farmers of America, um, here at Southwest Tech, uh, Mr. Bishop, who runs the forestry and heavy equipment program, um, who has been with us a few years now, is really growing his forestry and heavy equipment program, and is finding more and more interest from students in, um, reinvigorating the, the club, um. So, um, we are bringing forth this nomination form for you to allow us to offer that to our students, um. Yeah, and Eric, um, you know, Eric graduated from West Virginia University with a bachelor's degree in forestry, he is also one of our teachers who is currently, um, enrolled in the Career and Tech Ed Teacher Prep Program, so he's continuing his education on that so that he can receive his permanent teacher license.
I'm moved, except.
Okay, I was just gonna say, um, good, uh, second, did I hear, after, okay, um, all those, any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstaining, okay, so, Eric, uh, video graphic arts skills USA field trip.
Yes, um, so, April tends to be our month where our Skills USA competitions are happening for various programs. Um, this year, the video, uh, and TV production program, as well as the graphic arts, um, program, their competitions are on two days. Um, so typically, programs are able to travel, and, or you're shaking your head.
I'm shaking my head, there was a cancellation in one of the events, so they are going now one day, so they do not need the overnight.
So they don't need the overnight, okay, so we can move on from that. Um, so the second one is the cosmetology, um, Skills USA field trip, um. They will be heading there on April ninth, um, after school, and then they will return Friday, April eleventh. Um, and again, that's a kind of tight day competition for the students in the cosmetology program.
Any questions? No, entertain a motion. Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright.
Um, abstaining, names, okay, excellent, good luck. Uh, your turn, superintendent's report.
Um, first, I'd like to take this opportunity to thank the voters of Bantin County for passing our budget, um, and recognizing the importance of career and tech ed um, that Southwest Tech provides to our community, um, you know, the support allows us to continue to provide, provide that, um, to students in this area, um, and it's, it's something that's certainly very important to us, and, and obviously in our, in A. Um, the culinary arts program, you may have seen posted on our Facebook page, um, on my drive in this morning, I asked, um, our culinary arts instructor to give me a write-up to, um, to speak to the board today about their success that they had this weekend. I'm gonna read it verbatim, because it's actually kind of funny, but it's, uh, so, um, on Saturday, March eighth, under the cover of darkness, nine students returned to Southwest Tech. There were no fire truck or police escorts, only nine tired and humbled state champions, their instructors, and their proud parents. These nine students competed in the ProStar Culinary Arts and Management State Competitions held at the Culinary Institute of America. Riley Richardson, Kyle Caleb, Harmony Hill, Joe Morris, and Daniel Wellsby took first place in the culinary art competition, while Jade Horowitz, Ari Valnarego, Gabe Perkins, and Isabel Marby took first place in the first time in school history in the management competition. Both teams have earned their place to represent the state of Vermont at the National ProStar Invitational, held in Baltimore in May. We're extremely proud of their accomplishment, and know that these students will both represent Southwest Tech and Vermont with integrity on the national level, so we're really very excited about that.
Still B and A?
That's in May, yes.
Had time to get the fire trucks out.
Yeah, yeah, I know, I know, so, um, so they were, they were very proud, proud coming home on, uh, on Saturday evening. Yeah, um, so, other CTSO information to report about, um, we're moving into the state level competitions. Um, this week, HOSA, the Health Occupation Student Association for Future Health Professionals. Um, students, uh, involved in that will attend a leadership conference, um, and, uh, they will find out at the end of the leadership conference if they meddled in any of their previous competitions, um, which are designed to motivate members, um, to improve their knowledge and skills, and provide a system for recognizing the competencies developed by members through health science and biomedical science class and our instruction, related job training, and HOSA-related activities. So they go this week, um, on the fourteenth. Um, FBLA also goes this week, um, that's the Future Business Leaders of America, um, and they will compete in a broad range of business and career related areas, um, some of the competitions are individual, some are team, um, competition, um, some of the competitions are actual tests that students take, um, so we're very excited to hear the outcome of that for them. Um, and, um, what I also have is, um, the governor's proposal for education transfer take, transformation, um, I'm not sure how up to date you've all been keeping on any of that that has come out, uh, the initial presentation for public, um, schools called for a change to a five district system, um, rather than the current fifty-two, uh, supervisory unions or school districts. Um, within that, uh, that presentation to legislature, um, there's a recommendation, um, that's been made to create one statewide CTE system, um, whether that is a BOSI system or a school system with one superintendent, um, that remains to be seen, um. VACTED, which is the Vermont Association for Career and Technical Education Directors, we've been meeting on a weekly basis, um, to talk about, uh, various aspects of the proposal, um, so that we can form sort of some, uh, some statements as well as some feedback to our own legislators as they move along this process. Um, we would also like to be able to provide a voice and sort of our own, um, opinion around, particularly around governance and, um, funding, and how, what that looks like for career and technical education. Um, I encourage board members to stay up to date with these changes, um, especially around governance, as that can directly impact the current structure that we have, um, and probably a good resource for you would be the, um, the SBA, um, to kind of see what their position is on, on any of these items, um.
For people that don't know the, I know the acronym.
Oh, the Vermont School Boards Association, yeah.
And, so you had mentioned, uh, that there had been, or at least an idea has been floated for one statewide CTSE.
CTE.
CTE, sorry, who has voted that idea, is that the governor or, or someone else in the legislature?
That came out in some of the proposal by the, uh, governor.
So that's, that's the governor's proposal, okay.
Yeah, and that was through, um, consultation with, uh, the PA.
I, I have had some discussions with some of our local legislator, legislators, um, and they all seem to be up in the air, in terms of where the tech schools fall, and, and my understanding is that there has not been very much discussion at all, um, about where this governing structure will fall.
Right.
Like, it's, it's been very.
Yeah, yeah, it was interesting to watch the interim secretary of education's presentation to the legislature, um, and, you know, at, at the end of it, I, I was asking myself, well, what does this mean for CTE? Because I didn't hear a lot of that in the, in the presentation, but in the paperwork that was handed out to legislators, that's where it's further, um, defined the one statewide, um, CTE system, so, um, it'll be interesting. Leon, did you have a question?
Well, I was just gonna say that the report is in the legislative report number two, and it should have went out to all of the board members so that, uh, the whole thing is recorded, and you can just hear and see how, what was going on, and what that, what the proposals were for that program for the tech centers. That's all.
Okay. Um, I can certainly send out the report. Um. Uh, some updates from the, uh, school counseling department, we are wrapping up eighth grade tours and shadow days, um, which I think many people are very excited about, um, but the, the tours provide an opportunity for students to come into our building and see the, the number of opportunities that we offer here, um, the tours are typically. The tours are typically for eighth graders, but we have also had 10th graders, mostly from off-campus sending schools to come and do a tour so that they can see the opportunities that are available to them for a length break. Shadow days are usually for older students and it gives students the opportunity to spend, you know, either a chunk of the morning or a chunk of the afternoon in a particular program that maybe they've identified as a potential career interest. So it gives them a deeper understanding of what's involved in that program. So those things are wrapping up. And we are gearing up for administering the ACT workies testing, which is required by the agency of education. So we'll start that mentally launch. And that'll run through beginning of MEI. I also put in front of you, and it's now in the Dropbox, right Becky, the newsletter?
Yes, please.
Our Southwest Tech Updates Newsletter. So I'm not going to read the whole thing to you. But in front of you is the latest Southwest Tech Newsletter, which we created to keep our school community connected and informed. With so many programs and initiatives happening all at once, it's easy for faculty and staff and students to focus on their own areas. This newsletter brings, this newsletter helps to bridge the gap and ensuring everyone stays engaged with the incredible work happening across our programs. For our board members, it provides a snapshot of the learning achievements and real world experiences our students are gaining. The most up-to-date edition is always available on our website if you ever want to access that. And this will be the first edition that we share on social media to strengthen our connection with our broader community. I also, every month when we publish it, we also send it out to our sending school administrators and school counselors so they can see what their students are doing at their local career technical center. And I also think that it's, it's a tool that we can use to educate them as well so that they see what really is involved in, in all of our programs. This particular edition highlights a wide range of student experiences from Skills USA and the host of competitions to hands-on industry training and one-based learning, manufacturing and law enforcement. Our students are excelling in medical professions, cosmetology, graphic arts, culinary arts, automotive technology and more. They're also making an impact in the community, working on projects like the Bennington Little League Facility and the Little Free Libraries that will be used at the auction for the the McCalla Library. Yep. So take a minute to review the full newsletter and if you have any questions overall or any particular questions about any of our programs or offerings, you know, please feel free to, to reach out to me. That's all that I have.
Any questions for Meg? Great. Thank you, Meg. Chair's report, I'll keep it short. I'll just echo what Meg said. Thank you to the voters for supporting our budget. Very overwhelming and I do want to welcome Thomas and Tim, the board. Really exciting to have you all here. And let's just continue to provide great tech ed to our students and making sure that we're giving them the best outcome possible. So. Other, any other?
I have something.
Okay.
So along with thanking the voters and the community, as a business manager, I want to thank this board. I think your representation and your support of what we do here certainly makes a difference. And then you bringing that support to the community and talking about what we do and sharing and answering questions whenever a community member comes up to you. And every time I've had a conversation with each of you, you're very excited and passionate about what we do. And I just want to thank you as well because I think your support has helped make that budget pass every year. So thank you.
I, I have a confession to Meg. I volunteered for the law enforcement program to, to role-play and be a potential person. And it was really fun. I'm not kidding you. I was, I highly recommend doing it. Kids were fantastic. Actually, my confession is that I stole something inadvertently. It's one for the laundry. This is a present ID that Meg, I hope you can give back to Amanda.
I wasn't going to bring it out, but it'd be there.
Thank you for not doing that, but then I will. Anyway, I found it in my pocket a couple of weeks later. I was really blessed. The kids learned a lot from the first iteration to the second one. I was a little hard on a couple of them. And they did a really good job. I was nervous. They were more nervous. But they did a great job and I think Amanda is doing a fantastic job. So thank you for the opportunity. I will gladly give it again.
Sign him up.
You didn't know that. I just, a lot you don't know about.
Sorry, Megan. Has there been any communication to the board members about the committee assignments?
I was gonna, I, thank you. I meant to say that. Thank you. Usually, so in this little pack, welcome packet, there is a little line here, number two, to indicate what committees you'd like to serve on, please email Sandy. And that will be divvied up in terms of a well-balanced committee report. And you do see the past, last year's, who served on last year's for 24, 25. So do send those over to Sandy. There is education facilities, there is finance, there is policy, negotiations, and the superintendent eval is the board office. So thank you for that. I'm doing this. Any others? Okay. I'll entertain the motion to adjourn.
Second. Second.
All those in favor say hi.
Hi.
Hi. All those in May, yeah, okay. See you all next month. Thank you.